All right. I'd like to call the October first workshop to that order. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The six and three.
I'd like to leave you as soon as I have the states of America. And to for which it stands. Nation, our dog, and it is low with literacy and us.
And we'll start with both. Oh. Everybody down here on microphones.
They shouldn't need to go very far.
Yeah, they're.
Oh, they they fixed it?
They fixed it last time.
Yeah.
And like Latimer said, she has a light way out here. Okay, so let's start with real call and we'll start with. Captain Flounder, one quarter.
Adam Hand.
Mark Crutch.
Mark Miller. James Carlisle.
Right, and Rob Ward is at home taking care of his wife after their recent surgery, so. All people are accounted for. Uh, the first item on the agenda is change to the agenda. I'd like to put a couple changes to the agenda. One is a discussion of the upcoming council meeting agenda items. And if you guys are in favor of that, just raise your hand. Just a just a discussion, so everybody knows what's coming up on the next council meetings agenda. Kind of like, so you know what's going on.
And is is the is the agenda out now?
No, it's not. Well, what we'll do is Krista has some of the items that will be on there. If there's any information that we might be missing or something like that, a workshop is the best time to discuss it instead of. You know, very deviating itself. And then of course. There might be missing information when we have the regular meeting. And we can discuss it at that point in time, too. Uh, one of the things that I've noticed with our last council meeting was there was a lack of information to make. A complete decision. So. That's why I kind of like to have a quick discussion about what's going to be on the agenda, so we make sure that we have. All of that information that would be important again.
And what you're putting out is actually going to be on the agenda for next council meeting?
Possibly. We can determine or can you at this point determine every item on the.
I don't. So if we have a discussion about.
And we could actually add items on to the agenda tonight.
The idea is that council can direct the business that they would like to take up.
Right. So if you're in favor, of course, carry your hand. Yeah. For, okay, we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda. Um, the other one was discussion of current city projects. You know, things about like things like the wastewater plants, COVID times request. Uh, the audit and the budget and that separately, you know, again, this is a workshop, so we're just discussing. If you're interested in pursuing that tonight, we can. Anybody who's in favor of it, go ahead and raise your hand. What's I would do since I mentioned it? Yeah.
You're talking about putting these on next week's agenda?
Yes, exactly. Just get ahead and end up on it. Oh, it's best tonight. No, we're not. We're we're adding items to the agenda, right? One of the items in the agenda that I would like to add was the discussion of upcoming council agenda. Which is next week, which is actually everybody approved that we would go ahead and do that. The other item is to preview some of the print city projects that are going on here. And when I say preview, it will also come up in the regular city manager's report. So if, and it seems like everybody wants to go ahead and do that, then. Yes, you know. Okay, oh, yeah. Okay, so both of them are on the agenda. Uh, we'll do those as, let's say, one A and one B. Oh, wait a minute, we're all the way down to, uh. Yeah, so it'd be like around. Five A and five B. Okay, so, and I'm assuming that's an approval of the agenda items. So now we're on to.
Mayor, you need, you should take a vote so that the council can decide whether they want to take up what is on the agenda.
Yeah. On what is actually on the agenda now?
If they don't want to have these topics, they have the right to remove the topics.
Okay, so the only topic left we have is. Discussion in regards to what topics the council would like to work on, I'm assuming to work on for the next three months. It. And these will be in workshops. And we can remove that discussion from the agenda if you want. Anybody has any? Feelings about that?
I thought that was the whole reason for this workshop was to discuss these items.
Right.
Why would we want to take it off the agenda?
I'm lost.
Yeah, I got me really confused here. The way we're talking about this one or next week's.
May I?
Okay.
Um, so these are suggestions from my side of things. Um, the mayor had a couple of additional thoughts, but mostly it's to get input from you guys on what you would like to see, where you want to drive. As we start looking towards the new year, so.
These discussion topics.
The right, but also if you don't want to talk about them, then you have the right to say, you know what? We don't want to talk about this. We're not going to talk about your agenda. Um, so it should be approved every meeting to have. That the whole council agrees to have this discussion.
And I don't believe we have to make a motion because if we're making a motion, we're deliberating, so I think that this is a workshop.
Okay.
So I've seen sentences on this. Do we want to talk about design? I think.
Yes, sure.
Yes, we should. Okay, good. If you put it though. Isn't that? Great, so now we've got the agenda all ironed out. First off is, so, um. Yeah, anyone sent an explanation about what a workshop is? I don't know if I did or not.
No.
A workshop is simply an opportunity for the council to, uh. Improve their knowledge on the subjects that are being discussed. It's not a situation where we're going to be making any type of decisions. What we can do is simply say, hey, we need more information, or we can direct. The city manager to provide us something else. And that's the essence of a workshop. And one of the nice things about the workshop is we're not following any strict protocol. Per se, of, you know, we make a motion and then we discuss it and the like. But I still do want to keep with the regular decorum that's kind of spelled out in Robert's rules. Where nobody talks over anybody else. And you should still be recognized by me. And then we'll just go around like like we did when we actually had our first initial workshop, so. I I hope this workshop will help. And, um, you know, so we can have a really, you know, positive. Easier to discuss dialogue, so we can all have the information. And then once we gather all this information, when it comes next week, we'll be able to make better decisions. And, you know, we won't have to say, well, let's put this on hold for next week or next meeting, or call another special meeting to do it, so. That's the point you had in a workshop. Um, I've been a little, um. Lax in all the workshops. And, uh, you know. So we're going to try to get back into that more again. Obviously, if at the end of the night, you guys think, no, let's just forget this type of thing. I'm open. So why don't we start off with the first one, discussion of upcoming council agenda? So what I would like is simply say, you know, I'm thinking about adding this item and kind of give a little bit of an explanation about. The agenda item that you're adding, and then we can all kind of ask questions if there's information missing, you know. Or some, you can even offer to tell us what you will be providing for that. And we can decide whether we want to have it. And obviously, if you feel we need more information on it, we'll ask you that also. Okay, so, and I don't, what you'd like to first off?
Well, if you don't mind, I'll just go, um, over my kind of interim staff report so that there's an overall tone.
Okay, I'm I'm good with that. Are you guys changing the order a little bit? I I think that's fine.
Okay. Um, that the planning, um, department needs to have some sort of acknowledgement of services. With costs and projections and a deposit to ensure that customers that receive a permit actually pay their their fees. Excuse me, especially for like sending engineering fee. Um, when somebody comes to get a permit, they pay, they get their permit, we fill them later, the engineer and the, um. Um, planner bills quarterly, there's no deposit, there's nothing stopping them from taking their permit and saying thanks a lot. Um, the fee schedule, um, I did give copies out to a couple of people. Um, but it needs to be looked over, some things were missed when it was adopted at the beginning of the year and. When we approve a new V schedule for January of twenty five, I would like to have those conversations. Either worked on or in place so that we know, um, I can give you a copy right off the get go, and we're not waiting until February, March, and April to implement fee schedules. Um. And some of those are, I've been looking at a lot of, um, talks. And of course, I could provide you more information. For example, in. Um, in August, we paid six hundred and fifty dollars in water for this building. Um, so I'm I'm wondering, you know, where the cost share is for certain things, not just water. Um, and again, these are going to be hard conversations about who pays for what when there's an emergency, we replaced. Two or one hot water tank, two of them went bad in the senior building. So when those kinds of things happen, how much of that do we pay? How much? Um, of making sure that there is certified for, um, the seniors to have meals and things like that, when we replaced, um. faucets, um, because the health inspector came out. Conveniently while the hot water was hot, but we've got that straightened out, but I would like to know. This is an agreement that is in place so that a percentage or we pay, they pay, or however that works, because it seems like. Every time we come to a situation, there's always who's going to pay.
And just a question, um. Who's this other person?
Yeah, who's who?
That's going to pay. I know we pay a certain amount, and were you looking at a certain percentage for somebody else to plan on?
Well, do the do the seniors, do the friends of library, do other programs and people help share cost or the or is there? The three hundred dollars a month that we get in rent, is that? Has that been looked at recently? Um, and does that mean that we pay for for all of the things for them to implement their program?
Okay.
And so I would just like some clarity about all what costs we are supposed to provide. For wait weeks.
Do we have some sort of like actual detailed lease agreement with the seniors or?
I don't think so.
Okay, and that's probably where we, a lot of those answers.
And then kind of the same thing with the library, and we do maintain the building, um, and so there's. No share cost is, you know, so there's windows that need to be replaced, balance that needs to be replaced. And we keep coming up against the same who pays.
So we need to define who's paying for what.
Who's paying for what?
And how we're going to recuperate, whether it's simply a city or expense, or it's something where we recruit from other charges.
Correct, and so when we do the the deck. Um. Redoing the deck, there was, um. Mr. Edwards came and said that. He could get some help with that, which wasn't known to me before we did the thing, so I'm trying to negotiate what, how much can you? Help us out with, but again, is there isn't any clear.
And a photo up in the air and yes. Right now. Yeah, we don't want to do that in the future, okay. Um, now, is this part of the supplemental budget that we'll be working on?
That's not the supplemental budget.
So we'll include that in that part of the session.
No, this is just going to be getting good fences and. Or M P schedules for coming into January, because those conversations. Um, are delicate. Um, some of the other ones that were just missed that were, um, I can just make a recommendation, things like you have records requests. Um, that you charge fifty cents a page for, and yet anybody else twenty five cents a page. Um, so that doesn't make sense, and we are supposed to recoup our time for records request. But you have to have a policy in place to do that, and so I haven't been charging, so there are some other costs that you could be recouping also. Um, with the with this policy in place. Um, when I reported about the the copier being fragile and on its last leg, it has gotten worse since then. Um, I have asked, um, there's a request coming to you this next meeting to print off the five hundred. Um, Dune Rider maps. Um, I I declined the request in light of our copier situation, so that you guys can make the decision if. How how much lending are we doing before we can afford the hundred and fifty or seventy five dollars a month for a new copy machine?
Can can you explain to us what's happening with the with the copy?
It's, there's, it's old, it, they they can't find the parts for it, um, they.
Breaking, that was its problem.
Um, it, well, it jams, the stapler doesn't work, you can't put, use the, um. Bypass feeder with, um, larger paper. It just isn't working, and then it gets, it just gets jammed a lot, um. So we we've called them out since I reported that, I think probably five times.
So we have to make a decision on whether to trash it. Or can you repair it?
You, even if you repair it, they cannot keep, um, from what they tell me, the parts and toner is difficult to get. So it's almost like it's not worth even repairing.
Like the wastewater plant, okay?
Time for an upgrade.
It's time for an upgrade, and so I'm trying to kind of just limp by with what we have and make it work. Until we come up with another plan. Um, but also I did some really good tourism stuff for my previous city, and and maybe that money is better spent getting the word out in a larger audience, and I'm happy to. Help with that if they look like, um, or point them in the direction where they've been, you know, just printing. Is, are we talking about having this, uh, the conversation for the next agenda, so before it breaks, we can read, we can. If you would, if you would like. Um, you may, before you don't have anything to do.
I'm good with that. I'll put that on read then.
So copier. If if that goes on the agenda, can you provide us with some information that kind of shows the difference between any suggested service, like a monthly service? That as opposed to what it might cost to purchase one outright like we did.
Yeah, I met with the rep that we have, and he said that you could do the same thing again and purchase one. However, after five years, they will just bring you a new one. So you could kind of use it and abuse it, and then you just upgrade every five years, because you'll be in the same position here with a broke down one, having paid. Twelve thousand, twenty thousand, or whatever you choose, and then what do you do with the old used coffee machine?
I guess that was my question, is what what does one cost that it's our needs, I guess.
Yeah. Probably twelve.
Keep it for ten years over its life, so.
Now, is there?
I'm sorry, I'm being a little smart.
Is there a program out there at all through? These copier stores and stuff, or is there a lease or instead of out buying it direct? Maybe lease it and have them take care of the maintenance?
They do make, take care of the maintenance, um, in the, we get charged point zero zero one cent for black and white per page, even though it's our paper, our machine. And we get charged seven cents for a color page, and that will include the toner and them coming out and doing any repairs.
Well, I'm talking about, is it worth buying one, or is it worth leasing one? Instead of buying a brand new one out? And paying that much money for it, maybe we could lease one, or is there another option besides just buying a brand new copy machine?
You can lease one for, like I said, but depending on what you're looking at, between a hundred and twenty five and a hundred and seventy five, which fit our needs per month.
Okay.
So if you can just provide us with a comparison. And maybe we can work, maybe, um, true, so, okay.
Um. We're looking at implementing a requisite system here, um, the process has just been people. It it would be nice coming into the next year, if we had a plan, a strategic plan where, um, we have this shared goal of. I I know you guys did some some things for goals, but a longer goal so that. We all know what the plan is, you all know what the plan is. And the the way the requisite system is, is just to show up with bills, nobody is managing. Your wastewater and, um, street budget as far as what is being spent, there's no pre-approval process. It's just people are spending. And normally you have a public works director that would oversee the budget and and could understand the, um. Technicalities of wastewater and streets and know how to get things cheaper or manage your budget, and so it's a, there's a huge vacuum. There. So I'm going to at least try to do requisite systems, so we're getting pre-approval for things instead of purchasing and bringing me the bill and me having to figure out how that works. In the grand scheme of things.
So kind of like checklist?
No.
Because you don't, it's kind of hiring.
Just the authorization before they spend their money, right?
Like a purchase order, yeah.
Purchase orders, um, but also. Yeah, a purchase order.
System.
An invoice or a purchase order or something.
It it's an approval, so like if if they, somebody came and said, hey, we need to spend five thousand dollars on, you know, some pomp or, you know, something like that, there's at least. An approval that they can go ahead and get that service, they're just calling people out at this point and taking care of things, and that's just kind of been the culture.
Yeah, hard, right?
If we, if we didn't have a public works director here. If we did have a public works director, do you see that as equally, that you think those are the need to kind of city all? If we had that director, or would you think the director would have the, would have confidence in that director to make the decision?
Correct. Yeah.
And so what you're suggesting is, until we have a public works director, that they would come to city all for you.
Yeah. Um, we had a cyber breach. Um, we had an email come to me while one of the staff members was on vacation about two or three weeks into my. Tenure and requested, um, direct deposit funds being changed, and it looks like it was from our employee. Um, so I sent that to our CPA and I T. CPA said, no, this person would have done it directly, you know, requested it by me. Um, and so I sent it up to I T, and I T said, just delete it. So I reported it to the FBI, and then, um, we got another one when that staff member came back. Um, to her asking about another employee to change their direct deposit. And then, um, she reported it to the FBI. And then another one came by me when we were discussing a contract. Before I had brought it to you guys, we were discussing a contract for a hearings officer, and it looked like it was coming from that hearings officer. Asking about direct deposit information, that one I did not report, I just deleted it, um, and it was, I had told everybody in the office, be careful of these scammy emails going around. Um, I T did not take it seriously, as in somebody is monitoring our traffic. Um, that we needed, you know, to crack down on, um. The the security. So in that, um, we had I T training for one of our staff meetings, and. Later that evening, when I went to the CPA, she let me know that when a previous staff member was here, that they had sent an email to her requesting that, um. Another staff members may can't be changed, and the proof was that these people created a real check with the staff member's real address. And it said void on it, and it looked like that person had written it, signed it, just like the staff member signs theirs. Um, so the CPA did change it, and twenty four hundred dollars was paid to a scammy. Email. And we cannot recover the twenty four hundred dollars, um, our five thousand dollar deductible not covered, it's not worth it. Um, I talked to C I S cybersecurity expert, um, we are not covered in a way that we should be. Um, with currently with our I T. So I, he had suggested that I get, um, some more information from two other I T people. Companies, one of them is, um, through Elco, and we already use Elco for our attorney and for our planner. Um, what they do is they bring shared services together so that it makes it lower cost for cities, especially smaller cities, to get a big city. Um, product, and I have all of that information, another one was Covenant. Um, and they have a scope of work that I can also, um, it's a full R F P, as well as. Our current I T person is asking for us to sign a contract with them, so.
Okay. Okay, um, will that be in writing on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh, do we need, so I would be expecting to see the three different bits?
Yeah, I have them today, actually.
And what else would we need to say? Anybody else? Or looking for any additional information?
Have you, did this, did it outline, uh, the depth of the service?
They they do, and, um, yeah, they do. One of them is is a very formal R F P, and the other one is, um, it's, if they're, they're different in nature because of the shared service, so what the. What about Elco? They, um, can do a big variety of things, but they can do it as small as we need. And the good thing is, is they kind of set a price, and if we increase workstations, they don't charge us more, but if we decrease workstations, they won't charge us less either. They'll actually come out to the building, they'll, um, I think, once a month, twice a month. They'll actually come out to the building. They'll, I think, once a month, twice a month, they'll actually be here testing things and checking things. And it's sort of an à la carte kind of thing. You just add on services that you want. You're not stuck into a big scope of work. So it's really just it's tailored for cities.
Cover too, if we ever got the cameras working during city hall with that.
I I asked Covenant Covenant could do that. I don't know about Elco that is on my list of to do. Because the library has somebody that does theirs. But I'll I'll make a note to ask.
And I guess if the library has someone does it, at least we can potentially see what that costs.
Right.
Yeah, if they're already coming out to do the library, why are we bringing somebody?
Well, they have their own set. They have their own internet system and I don't know. How that works, but she done it. She said I can give them a call and invite them to you.
Do we know what they use for the library?
For video.
For IT, let me think.
For IT, they it's a Coos County like library.
Oh, okay.
System. It's nothing that. Kind of like that we can even be involved in.
Okay.
Um, I did get a cost of what we spent in IT. Last year and of course, that was before. We. Added city council emails. It was about eighty-nine hundred, ninety-two hundred, I didn't know. And so Elco says for about eight thousand dollars that they could provide us a very quality service. And it would include Microsoft three sixty-five, which we don't have and it's it's a huge problem. Emails are suffering. They're not seeing. We have very limited word function, Excel function, so.
And would this eliminate some of our present? Services that we're receiving from the other IT group?
Would it eliminate it?
Yes.
They would. They would convert what we have. They would take our current emails and move them over to.
Well, I'm just talking about cost. What do we have to pay the other IT service?
We don't have a contract with them.
Oh, okay.
No.
That's why the.
Sorry?
That would replace.
Correct.
Oh. Great.
And we have actually have money in the budget and everything to cover this, no problem.
The fire department is requesting a thousand dollars in Halloween funds. And then I I know that the homeless thing is, you know, something that people are not wanting to have discussions about. But I just want to point out that we were supposed to have something in place, time, place and manner over a year ago. And because we haven't done that. What? When we get calls and we're asking to shuffle people around and kick them out of places. It's be. I have told staff that we're not doing that anymore until you give us direction on where that is, where we're. We need to address time, place and manner and. So I've sent over a few things, some needs and things. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to take a look at that, but. I have a statement from Counselor Ward. If you want to read it. He says that he does not believe the topic should be a focus for the time and attention that the council has at this time. It's premature. As was recently discussed by councils, there's only three options available with regard. To do challenges of the homeless population in Lakeside. They are do nothing, adopt new codes that would enable city to encourage the homeless to go elsewhere. And to provide some area for them to go. There's been much shock recently of some kind of camping code to encourage the homeless to go elsewhere. Investing time and resources in developing such a code is a futile effort. Unless there is also both the means and resources to enforce such a code. That means a local law enforcement presence as Coos County Sheriff's Department have been very clear. They're not going to enforce local codes. Accordingly, I do not believe that efforts to encourage the homeless to move elsewhere will have an effect unless. And until there is local law enforcement presence, any effort to provide a designated location for the homeless within Lakeside. Will require both substantial resources and support the community. There is at this time, no evidence of meaningful community support for a designated location for the homeless. There is at this time, no potential location on public owned property. That could be used year round that would not also be highly controversial. In light of these difficulties, even as a designated location that is fully funded by external entities, it is not likely to come into existence at this time.
Okay, and then actually I'm looking over the agenda and I might fall down and we can start talking about number six. Which is a public council would like to work on. If you guys are okay with that. We won't be gathering information on this at this point.
Um, the rainbow contract is ready for you to look at and make sure there isn't any other. Things that would hold up the approval of the contract at the next meeting.
And this has been blessed by Gary.
Correct.
Okay, and. How's Ms. Fleming had an opportunity to look at and she's willing to sign it?
Correct.
Okay, so will we basically in the next meeting will be a yes now? That's we continue with the contract and of course, we can go back and change it again if you want to, but. So this is a good point to ask anybody. Is there further questions about this contract that you might have? And further information, I know we haven't actually seen the contract, but what we do know now is. Or did you provide?
It's in the package, it's in the package in here.
Okay, so the contract is in here. I I haven't looked at it yet, but if any of the other counselors. Have any additional questions on it that you want to crystal research?
He also said that he said a waiver would be good. That you asked, excuse me, counselor can asked about a waiver for the.
Oh, for Garrett. Garrett Miller.
Correct.
Yeah.
That he should have a waiver.
Okay. All right. So no questions on that and we're ready to go with that on the the next weekend. In a week or so. Good, good. All right.
And so everybody is good. I just want to be doubly clear, like everybody is.
Sound like that. Right here and who's who's good with going forward on this for the next weekend.
With the contract?
Yes. Not not whether you agree with it or not, just that you're ready to. Go with it in the meeting. Good, all right. That's sounding better. One of the reasons for a workshop. Okay.
And like I said, the request for the brochures.
That should be on the next.
Um, the other thing I just wanted to point out. Counselor would have been a comment about the. Staff report about it being further up in the agenda rather than below. The ones that were below are usually just informational like when. Counselor Miller gives his report and Counselor Poirier gets his report. They're usually not action items. And so if I put stuff in there, it affords you the ability to take an action out of that report up higher. If you don't like that, I'm happy to change it. But. Again, your council rules and mayor doesn't want to talk about council rules, I don't think, until the next council comes in.
Wouldn't be fair than change them. For the last three months.
But but if you're okay with me putting it up there, so if there is something that you want to take action on, I would. Like.
Yeah, I mean, we can move. Agenda items around all we want. That has nothing to do with that. So can you, yeah, explain your reasoning?
I was just in the, it was being to see it in the consent agenda. It's usually it's works the bottom, the council comments and then so it's. Yeah, I I would. I personally like to be able to talk about the place during staff report and stuff, not just.
I, yeah, so that makes sense. I think we should have it outside of the consent agenda because. Just, well, and it would just be a report, right? We can have something outside of the agenda where you're just reporting on everything. Just so that it gets the attention that it needs maybe.
So you would like to see it outside of the consent agenda?
Okay.
I would agree with that. What are you guys thinking?
I think that was there on Saturday.
Okay, that's that's great.
So where in the agenda would you like me to place it? Just where it normally lives?
Yeah, I think so.
You you, even though those aren't usually action items.
No, I mean, I feel like you there. I think it could be at the top of the agenda, we're towards the top of the agenda, but just not within the.
Cause that's agenda.
This then it seems as if you're asking us to consent. To something that we may not have even seen until we sit down. You know what I mean? If you want to make a report or inform us of some things, beginning of the name, that makes all the sense in the world. But I don't, that doesn't make sense to me that would be within the.
Okay, so when we're talking, when I give you public works and wastewater. Could those be in the consent agenda as well in the the library? I've been giving you reports about their departments.
I'm not sure what you're asking us to consent to. We see we see the report, we read the report. Why are we being asked to consent to? That's the part I don't.
Well, we're settled on it's not going to be in the consent, it can. Well, good. Now we're trying to figure out where.
Um, well, the purpose of the consent agenda is like things like meetings and stuff where there's no discussion on it. And I think what we're hoping for is if we do want to discuss it, there's an opportunity to. So like we before, it's been council comments and then it's the city manager's report and then. Maybe all the staff reports in there or I mean. Wherever it is on the agenda, just as long as we have opportunity to talk about it.
And those items are not you, so it would be under new business or that's kind of where I'm confused is when you get down to those reports, it's they're not usually. Actionable items. They're just informational and consent agenda is just that the regular course of business, your financial reports. Your calendar, your minutes, because so you're not saying I approve minutes, I approve. The financial courses, all of the regular course of business stuff is your consent agenda. But if. If I give you wastewater, you want all of those at the bottom as well? And wastewater and in public works and all of that.
I think maybe there's a there's a there's a place for you to make a judgment call. Is it something that we need to hear at the beginning of the meeting? We might not need to hear a wastewater report at the beginning, even if it's not. In reference to anything else on the agenda, but if you have information that is, you know. So what I'm looking for, that is a.
Substantial.
It's just about what we're about to discuss, then of course, having that upfront makes.
Well, then we're splitting the the manager's report and that's not really, you kind of want to keep to the same.
And I say give it to us all again. It would be difficult with my choice.
But remember, if we do that, we'll have already approved the changes to the agenda. And even though we hear this and all of a sudden we want to talk about it. You know, we can't. Essentially, that wouldn't be part of our agenda.
I mean, sounds like. Again, if it's something that's an agenda item, but when you're talking about it.
Right.
It's just our information, the way we just go.
Right, and that's what. Exactly, that's what a manager's report is, is it's information, but. And this is why I definitely agree with you guys on it, putting it in the agenda. Uh, putting in the consent agenda is not really. Takes away the focus. On on the report, which I think that information for a manager's report is. Importantly, we all say.
So we don't need a consent agenda then?
Or the other reports?
Or financials or.
Yeah, that's those type.
Okay.
But like what you're explaining tonight, this is really good information that. We should all be aware of, so. Which we'll try to get a lot of this information in our workshops, so we can sit here and discuss it.
So I will put. My report, leave it where it was and put the other reports under consent agenda of wastewater, library, things like that, so.
Sounds good.
That sounds like.
Okay. Um, and then. And I'm done except for what else is left on the agenda.
So one of the things. Is what I'd like to see also is. We probably need another update from Aaron and you guys should have a wastewater plan. I don't think it can happen to this meeting. The the next, this next agenda, but maybe in November. Because I know we should be at the point where we're starting to award bids and.
He had to do a revision and get approved for business work.
Yeah, and he needs to explain to all of us what's going on.
Okay.
And. Um, I think we've covered all topics in one, it seems like to me.
What topics?
Uh, the discussion of the upcoming council agenda and the current status of city projects. Did you have anything else to add to those two? Or was there any other discussion for me that I started in regards to that?
You mentioned COVID, did you?
Oh, I looked on. COVID funds and the requests that we got from the US Treasury Department. And you're working on that one?
There's two, so there, which I reported last time is that. During my predecessor's tenure, there was a request from the federal government. About how your guys spent COVID funds. And which was one of the reasons I had brought Amanda in and she's kind of falling into the clerk's position, but. I asked for some time to get those documents together and they are saying, there's no time, you need to. This was supposed to be done back in April. Now, there's another request from that was supposed to be reported in April as well. And the. How you spent COVID funds, everybody that spent COVID funds, got COVID funds, has to report it. And it was supposed to have been done in April, so which requires having your own account. It's it's their personal account, so it's not like it's a manager account, city of Lakeside account. So I'm getting the account set up so that I can do the reporting, even though it's under the city of Lakeside umbrella. So that takes a little bit of time to get done and then trying to figure out where the documentation is because it's. I talked to. Previous Mayor Edwards and seeing how some of those things were done and apparently you guys spent twenty thousand on a. Shipping container for over here and then. If if we didn't spend any other money, you have to have it allocated by the end of the year. Which is a budget problem because you allocated money differently than spending COVID.
So that would be, I always think that would be a priority on the.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So everybody understands, that's a, that is. So everybody understands, that's a, that is probably one of Chris's biggest priorities right now.
And we did get the audit submitted, now we're waiting for them to come and do their test cases. Okay, so.
So we're pretty good on the audit. Depending on who the auditor is, sometimes I'll constantly ask for information.
Uh, but just so that we know that, like, this is a huge rabbit hole that of. I don't think the documentation is going to support.
Well, the hole has to be filled. I mean, we'll get something from, yeah, I mean, it just has to be done. So.
A little note on that, uh. Last year, when this was here. I remember. Asking her about them, um, and. I was asking her if they had to be in a separate fund. For just that, and she said, no, it just goes into the general fund. Um, I mean, I know it's like, I I don't know if you're allowed to reach on to the list, so. Oh, but she might know, like, where that information is, or, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like that, I don't have a disagree, but. We'll get, we'll get to the bottom of this one way or another. It's a responsible idea, less as a city to make sure that we're doing the.
Would Stephanie have any information?
Um, her take on it is that was prior to her tenure, so no. Um, even though they're supposed to be. Keeping track of. Certain cases, certain things like that, you should have all. You should be able to go to ARPA funds and and know all of what was spent, so. Um, are we? Talking about these other topics, or are these, are we done with those?
Uh, we were on the first two agenda items, which was. Five day discussion of upcoming council agenda. Our counselors, are we done with that discussion? Do you think we're pretty much satisfied on that? Yeah, okay, so five days done, five days was preview of current city projects while I. People are good around here. So five days, five years, now we're on to. Uh, topic number six, and we kind of started the. These were, um, well, Chris, stay at point.
Um, again, I I know this isn't something that we want to talk about, but we are facing almost daily. A safety concern here, where I went into the senior building early in the morning and somehow was jimmyed open. To find a homeless person in there with, there was nobody that was there or open. Um, today we had somebody. That was hyped up on drugs running through here, sheriffs tackled them and arrested them. Um, but he ran in here first, we had the front door locked, not the back door, because we hadn't left yet. Um, so he. Came in and left, and then they came and tackled him. Um. There was needles found out in the parking lot. Um. We had to shut down, I think, Tuesday. Tuesday, Monday, I'm getting confused, but Dennis felt we were not safe, because when it started raining. They were congregating under the. Um, dry area, looking through clothes and things like that, and so. Every day it feels like we are being um faced with safety concerns. We had, you know, an issue some weeks back, which kind of exposed what. Coos County Sheriff's is not willing to do, so I don't know how to keep my staff safe. At this point.
This is a big issue. Something we might want to address in a workshop, pretty good thing. Well, these are suggestions. Do you think we have enough time to go through the homeless?
I think we need to assess the part of. That she didn't brought up, maybe not a legal issue, but.
That's fine.
But I mean, yeah, I think we go for anybody's going to adults on how we can.
Yeah. How are they getting, how they, how are they coming in? Back here.
Through the back, uh, we know we have to keep the gates open while we're in open hours and. It has everything, those, these doors are not breakaway doors. If these front and back doors are locked, we are locked in here in case of a fire. We're trapped.
So is the suggestion potentially to have pushbars on your.
Dennis is gonna, sorry, staff is gonna look at getting pushbars instead of having to lock ourselves in. Um, but it also, I I don't know what to do about the attractant of. The services that are bringing people here.
Tell us about that, what 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 services do you think are attractive? I know it's a difficult question. It is.
Um, well, specifically the the free clothes, you know, uh, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I love helping people, but. It's, it's a free for all, sometimes there's food left out there, there's. You. The snack packs at the library, but this is where they come to get those things. And so this may be their safe haven. Running from cops and things, so I don't. Um, we are attracting as much as we're complaining about it. So.
How can we involve the attractants? Like, you know. There's got to be some way that. I don't know, I, I don't know.
If if food and clothing and all that is only available during designated times that have calling scares. There to manage it, and it's absolutely nothing available outside of those times. Like, you know, you're saying, it sounds like you're saying some clothes are just left out there, if that's not the case. If food is not just left out there, does that start to help in your mind?
It it is still, this is the safe place, because this is where people get things, and there we have certain people that are here. Probably. Seventy-five to ninety percent of the time, they sort of hang out.
I hear what you're saying, but. As far as what we can do, is all we can do is, like you said, remove the attractant, the attractant is clothing. Then we don't put clothing, the attractant is food. Then we can't have that food available when it's outside of the designated service times, is that?
Well, what I suggested to staff was that we at least to put an accordion gate across when. People that are not offering those services are not there, so, um. That will mitigate some of the hanging out, I think, but again, um, the jimmying the door in and getting it. People just find it, it's a safe place, whether the clothes are here or not, the place they use, the restroom.
I think too, this is more just the city hall problem, you know, it's just. Out why, rock a state-wide problem, but. Are we? Because I mean, you can put all the bars and do all that stuff, but if we're not. Tackling it as a bigger picture, it's just. It's just going to be somewhere else, you know, so. I think. Whatever staff can do, they can solve the safer. More priority and an easy, easy fix to the big issue, but. I think also. At the city to really think about the bigger. Interest in it.
In the meantime, the pushbars and not letting them track themselves, so we all agree that's like. Security, basically.
Yeah, I mean, that would be probably a good start. Um, the state that you're talking about, how much does that cost?
I I don't know yet, we just had that conversation this morning, and it's something that I talked to. Um, the director.
And you're just talking about a gate in the back, right?
Just the one that goes across where the seniors offer the clothes and.
Oh, yeah, so that's, it's, because I know there was discussion in earlier councils about. Um, fencing law, the library and stuff like that, and that got expensive or something. I wouldn't pay too close attention, but we're talking about something that's not bad.
It would just make the whole breezeway open rather than that little. Area where the sheds and things are open and the tables, it would just close off the tables.
And is there a possibility of having cameras and bright lights?
There's cameras. There's cameras out there, like that library portion, and all of their cameras are.
Basically, a little show for us. In other words, cameras don't stop them.
Well, no, no.
What about, and we had, I mean, this would only be a matter of the bright lights, but. You probably hit the neighbors, so, just thinking of.
And then also, I I don't know, you know, maybe having a conversation with the fire chief and having a a needle drop box, you know, so that. Hopefully people don't leave them in the parking lot. Because if you're not out there monitoring it daily. Um. You don't know what's being left, and then those things are being put on Facebook as if we're not taking care of things.
But. I kind of like, um. Kind of like Adam's approach of, let's take care of the immediate, and then let's work on the other part too. But this is just, this is sharing of information right now.
Do we need to move? That clothes giveaway or whatever else we're we're giving out, we need to move it away from City Hall?
Well, wherever we put it, you know.
I I understand, but we're talking security for.
Yeah.
The people at City Hall. Maybe we need to think about moving it somewhere else or having it. A drop box or something. Maybe away from the front steps. Correct?
Yes.
Are we separating issues here? In other words, we have homeless, and then we have, what can we do in the meantime about homeless? Do you want to separate issues, or do you want to keep it as part of the whole? Just as far as a matter of process.
I think we need to split it when it comes to homeless, when it comes to uh. Security for our people that works here at City Hall, that has to be two different agendas. I agree.
No, I agree with that. But and this is just, you know, so Chris can have agenda items in the future.
Yeah, because if you don't feel safe working here, that that's not a place to be.
No, I thought about that. Yeah. So, so are we asking Chris to just put the two items?
I think so.
I'm looking for the agenda you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I mean, and any further discussion, we can have that right now too. I'm fine with that. I'm just saying in the future, when we try to ta- tackle this huge problem, maybe we should. You know, have the items split a little bit.
I think that they will not set very important for the whole homelessness generally. Because it is such a massive thing, we keep discussing how we fix the problem. But there are lots of little, if we break it into little other things, the problem gets tiresome. Definitely overwhelmed, you know.
May I?
Yes.
For the homeless, though, we do have to have a policy, so if we can address that. Um, however, by law, we have to have time, place, and manner.
And I don't have a problem doing it simultaneously, too.
I do know that. On the agenda for the league board and cities conference this month. Meeting updating us all on. That and how that has changed with the recent Supreme Court, because at the last LOC meeting, we had a conversation from the. One of the big federal lawyers, and he was saying that everything's on hold at this moment, because. And that may explain, it's not an excuse, but it may explain why we haven't made any progress over the last year or whatever. Honest, because it's all been up in the air, that has been decided. And here before the end of the month, we will have the opportunity at the meeting to to get an update, and you know better. What what we are required to do, because I think that has been a big question. Before my time in the council, what is the, you know, we we obviously can only do the bare minimum, because we're so limited in resources, but what is the bare minimum?
Um, I think to differ a little bit, because House Bill three one one one. Five says that we have to.
I'm not, as I'm saying, that's, I'm okay with whatever it said we have to, as long as it's not clear what the have to's are.
I did a little. Research on that, um, and I kind of. It's a little lengthy, but I was just wondering if I could read it and about kind of. Maybe get the next step for the city.
No, for a workshop.
Okay, well, a little background, uh, the issue of homelessness has become increasingly urgent. In response to House Bill three one one five, a recent US Supreme Court sided with the local ordinance in Oregon that bans homeless people for sleeping outdoors. Or then allows local government to enforce these laws. In response to this decision, attorney PM Evangelist wrote, or has now restored the ability of cities on the front lines of this crisis. Develop lasting solutions that meet the needs of the most vulnerable members of their communities, while also keeping our public spaces safe and clean. The City of Lakeside has. One camping ordinance, I think, in the commercial zone. Um, proposed discussion of a potential ordinance has been brought forward to the city council on several occasions. But requests have gone unanswered, most recently a discussion. Uh, for the camping ordinance, local issues and policies was placed on the June sixth, twenty twenty four planning commission agenda. This agenda item provided a sample ordinance adopted by the City of Newport. Uh, non-camping use of public property by homeless individuals. The organ league of cities has published legal guidance and resources documents to support the implementation of HB three one one five. I'm going to skip a little bit down here, um. Current status, careful consideration must be taken when adopting policies. To address unauthorized. Unauthorized overnight camping and homelessness, while HB three one one five requires the regulations of occupying city property. It also allows for cities to determine what is in the best interest of the community. Currently, the city has no overnight camping ordinance and has failed to comply with HB three one one five. Adoption of the ordinance is a critical first step to comply. Next steps. Adoption of a camping ordinance, critical first statute of five, working closely with the city attorney, review, we have. A draft of camping ordinance somewhere, it was presented by council at one point, yeah, yeah, sometime last year. Um, scheduled public hearing and adoption of the ordinance is necessary to move forward. While HB three one one five requires cities to designate public property spaces for persons experiencing homelessness. Also allow for cities to determine those objectively, objectively reasonable. The City of Lakeside is referred to in Easton recently revised LOC guide, the persons experiencing homelessness. That says on page ten, how cities proceed. And it outlines how to document this complex issue. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of where.
So is this the most current information? Because Adam was just telling us that they are going to have a. Meeting based on this thing versus that again.
Um.
Yeah, to me, it would make sense to wait until we got all the information in front of us.
What he's talking about, the July nineteenth decision of city grants passes, what we're waiting for.
Yeah, that's what a lot of people were waiting for, and that has happened, so we have answers to it, and at this. LOC conference coming up, I know on the agenda isn't. But the time period to get caught up from those lawyers, so. They'll tell, you know, maybe they can give us a little more guidance now that that decision.
Where is that conference at?
Yeah, I think about two weeks.
Well, good, we'll get some answer.
On page, on page eleven, it does say that cities are required to implement HB. Three one one five by July one of twenty twenty three.
You know, we know that one.
Okay.
We're over. So. You guys will be attending for all you guys will be attending that meeting.
And then also they'll be discussing it in the legislative session. Um. LOC has weekly call-ins that you can listen to the lobbyists, so those are. That's going to be a a huge one that they'll talk.
Right, and you'll provide a report back to all the rest of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, in reference to what Nikki was just saying, it sounded like. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, in reference to what Nikki was just saying, it sounded like. And it sounded like what she was suggesting, and I feel like I agree is that. Hopefully, we can all agree that we need to start working on, I can't know what that exactly looks like. How far down the road that might be, who knows? But do we all agree that that's something that's needed? So we can just like have a foundation, a little discussion, it seems on salt, squishy ground because we don't have the information.
Like Ricky said, we, we did, we have one. Yeah, I was just, go ahead. Well, yeah, there, there's one out there somewhere that I've actually seen.
So, so since we've already got a good base, it sounds like, I, I don't know, but you guys have already worked on it. Let's not reinvent wheels or anything like that. But if you got a good base, you go to this meeting and get the additional information you need. And then, you know, we start working on something. I think our biggest issue is where we're gonna put it.
Well, we may, we may.
People are gonna try to.
We may find that we're not required to offer.
Did that know, time, place, and manager says that you have a place that they don't get in trouble to for overnight. So it's not saying that you, you have to provide service for them. It's just that they're not gonna be in trouble from like the hours of, let's say like ten PM and like seven AM.
And that will be a great question to ask them at the conference, to make sure that we get a little bit clarity on that.
Well, I know they're, uh, I mean, like, for example, North Bend, Caspian Street, right along the highway that we let them park. And stay overnight, or then when the sun comes up, they have tops and they're shooting off, but we wouldn't.
North Bend is also closing the Deveraux Center.
Just for sake of discussion, not that this is a good or a bad idea, but just for the sake of discussion. We do have some stretches, uh, whereas it's a sparrow road that are within the city limits. Out by the, out by the cemetery, right?
Well, somebody was claiming there's actually a map up there. Of areas that we could use, so when we get to that point, we need to pull out that map of all the areas.
Putting that out there is that's a potential spot where we could say that between this hour and this hour, you can be. And, yeah, yes, we're gonna be very limited on how we can enforce it come seven AM. But if we have a policy in place, we may be fulfilling our, our responsibility. Whether or not we can effectively enforce it, we still fulfill our responsibility by having a policy.
We just have to figure out what is actually, uh, city property and what comes to public property.
And I think that's a good idea, and that should be pretty easy option now.
I keep on being told there's a map out there. We just have to find that. Okay, just have a map or something of what, of all the properties that we could have a women's dry area.
And we know where our city boundaries are.
Not, not much of us drive.
That might not mean one of the qualifications.
Problem is, who's gonna enforce this in, in the morning and say, hey, it's. It's seven o'clock or it's eight o'clock and it's time to move on.
We may not have much ability to do that, but again, simply having a policy in place may fulfill our responsibility.
I just wanted to, I mentioned it at the last meeting, I don't know if everybody is okay with me going forward with. Speaking to, um. The chief, Cap Shaw from Reesport. He's interested in seeing what he can do to help us to provide that presence, so there may be something. There that we can work out that isn't left full time.
And don't forget, there's other organizations too, like the Kokeo Indians, where. At one point in time, we're willing to offer, uh, we have the world services. And we know the counties. So we don't have to worry about them anymore.
And so when you talk to the, the chief, have you had any more discussions with him? I know you talked about it at the last meeting we had.
So I left him a message yesterday to see about getting together. He has to have, we have to get together with his city manager, just kinda, you know, just have a discussion about what it looks like. That they would charge us or what they wouldn't, but also it was brought to me that they have. A retired police officer who's been doing code enforcement for ten years. So, um, we had talked about that as well, implementing somebody here if we put out for a volunteer code enforcement officer. Um, that maybe we get somebody like that Reesport has, so.
Yeah, this guy is for free, right? For Reesport, he's doing it.
Correct, yeah, volunteer.
Go ahead.
Um, I know no one likes the talk of like taxes, um, but I think. We really, I know a lot of people are fed up with the public safety issue in Lakeside. And I think possibly think about putting a public safety levy on the ballot for people to vote on, cuz I know. So many people are frustrated with the way things are kind of going here, and if we. Can put that in their hands and say, you know, get an officer for this amount, this is what the levy would go for.
And I seem to remember, just four or five years ago, we were talking about a levy. For just a police officer, and there was a lot of research done on that, maybe we can. Go back on the deal, research that was done to offer additional possibilities, like the Kokeo Indians and. That, that type of thing, so we can, you know, figure out where we wanna go. But that, but I think everybody, I don't know, we'll have to gauge what people want by vote. But, uh, I think people are really getting to the point where.
Before we can, we're simply, I would say, we need to have. Probably plan A, like the outline, so we can communicate very clearly, you know, what can we give. And that's where finding out, like, if there's some sort of agreement with Reesport. Or the Indian tribe, or federal government, or, you know what I mean, there are a lot of entities involved with these properties.
Exactly, and that's one of, I think that's one of the reasons last time taxes were brought up is. There was no. Not enough justification, even though there was.
Yeah, communicating that publicly in a clear way is the problem.
Also, um, there's the issue of a lot of county roads here in Lakeside and that those are not ours to patrol. So, at what point do we hold the county's feet to the fire?
That's another thing, when I was in here talking to Krista last time, I want to make time personally to go to one of the. County commissioner meetings and just kind of express. What's going to send it, I mean, we all pay county taxes and we all should have a little bit more security. In our town, especially for Tommy.
And there was some discussion, like for instance, on parking up in Nellie Street or whatever, that's a county road, we may not have the ability. To, to enforce things on those parking spots. But that's just one of the issues that potentially we could put together a presentation, go to the county and say, hey, look. We need, services needed at these spots, if you guys aren't gonna do it. We'll hear you, but if you're not gonna do it, then sign something that gives us the ability to enforce.
I've been to the county commissioner's office probably ten times over the last year, talked to them. Every one of them, and it all comes down to. We can't afford it. And that's where, that's where it will go.
Well, it wouldn't cost them anything to say. We give you permission to enforce parking on Lake Street. Does that cost them anything? It takes something off their belt.
Well, yeah, but.
How are we gonna address that?
First, you can't get the legal ability, the first step is getting the legal ability to do so, and then.
I, I don't know. I'm guessing though, any. That we would be able to enforce anything in our city, whether it's the county road or the city street.
That's how I feel too, but it's been presented to us a few different times. That we're can't enforce parking on.
But they mostly bought that, the county, two street when it comes to maintenance. Now, you were talking about, uh, a gentleman that does it for free, that tired police officer. Have we been in contact with him recently or?
That was gonna be part of the discussion with the, uh, chief is, um, how did they, did they, maybe we can just get their job description? How did they start out? I just wanna get some more information so that I can give you. Um, a good example, but the fact that he's been there for ten years and you look at Reesport, I mean, it's complaint driven. And it's, you know, it's a cute clean place, and so, um, I think. That's something that we should be very driven to find how we can implement that program, but no, I haven't until. I go and have a, a meet and greet.
And, and they have a great police force also, so.
I feel like a breeze for it, well, and work with it always.
Absolutely.
Going down that path as much as possible.
Talk to anybody, this is a possibility, yeah. I mean, talk to the tribe, talk to the, uh. Even North Bend, Trous Bay, I, I, whatever it takes to like get something going.
Just be talking to the chief, he, um, sent staters in here for us, so, um, he's. He's trying to put a word out to, to help us out in the meantime, so. It's, it's not a law, it's not a, you know, an agreement, it's not. Guarantee coverage, but when they're, you know, too late for you.
It just seems like the county is working with the counties, but.
But, but if we, but if we can set something up and says, okay, you have. When it comes to a homeless person, says, okay, you have this spot to park, you have this place to park, but it's seven o'clock, we need to be gone. Maybe we can talk to the police force from Reesport, whoever it is, and say, okay. This is our presence, you need to move on now.
And another thought that comes to my mind is parts of these areas are in a designated ATV route. And if it's within the designated ATV route, then the designated ATV officers have the ability to patrol that area. So, just in this third, if we were to designate. Parts of the middle has that safe overnight spot, you're not gonna get run off by a rescue. And we did need someone to come through there, it's a seven AM, and try to rouse those people as best you can. Then potentially the ATV officer, who is then allowed to be in that area, could do that.
That would be.
I mean, they, the county got some really big grants based on our increase ATV route, so.
Yeah, instead of. Yeah, instead of a regular civilian going over there going, hey, man, you guys need to move, and they're like, yeah.
Big truck with flashy lights on top of it, uniformed.
Exactly, it works almost every time.
So, this seems like this is a topic that we're not gonna solve tonight. Uh, do we wanna continue with this? Or put it, or in a better, in a better time?
Well, we need to find out our, uh, our options when it comes to, uh. Reesport or whoever it is and have, uh. Just to go ahead and keep working on this and see what we can do. When it comes to somebody like that. Uh, oh, that retired police officer, what do we need? Basically, I'm breaking down and saying, this is what we need for. I don't know what I'm talking about here.
Would you like a volunteer job description?
Basically, yes, I would. What we need to have put into place. Yes, yeah, I will help, I'll pitch in.
I think, um, hopefully like move on to, um. Picking out what are next step is gonna be to tackle the issue. So we're not just gonna begin from the beginning, just, you know, what we're gonna, you know. The ordinance.
So, this is what I'm hearing so far is, one, we want to address the safety issue of homelessness first. And then I also heard that Krista needs to continue conversation. In regards to what type of law enforcement help we can get, those are the only two steps I see so far.
And we need to find out.
Oh, yes, exactly. We need to go back and find the base of what we've done so far. So those are the only three steps I see so far, if there's other steps we need to include in this.
Well, there will be later, but that's a good start.
Well, yeah, there might be a lot later, it's. I'd say we're, it's a lot of pieces, but, you know, anytime you have them out. You start by one show at a time.
You're right, but as long as we can find someplace, we have somebody to enforce it, that's a great step in going forward.
Okay, so, um, in regard to the workshop so far, we would go in some direction of that. Also remember your priorities of this. Uh, thing with, uh, federal government, COVID. The COVID, that's totally a priority. Are you clear with the direction?
Um, I believe so.
Okay.
Um, is there, was there anything else about the agenda that people liked or didn't like? I just wanna be. Um, clear that I'm giving you what you're looking for.
Oh, that, that's a good thing, I didn't see it in the topic items here, but we definitely discussed that if you guys want to. Any, uh, any suggestions as far as improvements on the agenda?
I think. The only improvement I, I can see on top of what we've already discussed is potentially getting the agenda in the pack, so. A little, little, as soon as possible, as soon as, uh, any day or even a meeting. That really helps me be prepared when I come in. So if any of that information is available, like at least ahead of time, getting an email.
I, I did.
Did you sign, you did? I mean, I didn't get, I mean, those stacks of stuff, people like that, but I did. The only thing I got was a one-page agenda, an email.
I got this on my box a week ago, whole thing.
So, yeah, don't forget, you guys will box that.
So it's one that is emailed, it's.
Oh, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, um, so if you guys don't get. Something, can you just let me know that you didn't get it? Like I said, the emails have been really goofy, um, so if we can just kinda. Help me out and just let me know that you didn't get something until the email thing gets kind of straightened out, um, but I. Thursday by four o'clock, you should have an agenda in a packet. Um, for your regular meeting, and if we have set work session days, you can expect it a week ahead of regular work session. The Thursday before. And, um, same thing for commission or any meeting, it's always gonna be. The Thursday before.
Yeah, this is what we had in our, our box today.
So, um. And don't forget, any changes we wanted to introduce and stuff like that, this is the moving. This is a moving document, it can change, you know, if you guys wanna change it, it can change very easily, providing you need to.
I am all for like adding like the conversation. But the point of publishing the agenda, I thought a week in advance, just so the public had time to know what was gonna be discussed. I'm gonna fully change the agenda, they, uh, it kind of defeats the purpose, uh.
Right, and that was my bad, I changed it, but I thought it was very important to. Have these items for this workshop so we can, you know, start making the correct steps. I wanna talk about agendas. And here you please.
Any answers, just need to be up higher.
Anyway, the, the public meeting laws have been taken over the state of its conditions. And one of the things that they really want, is the agenda is the fact, they would say what they're going to do. Not waste of coming to the reunion and changing around, uh, only in dire emergencies. And I think we're getting away from that a little bit, like, like changing things and, and that. And, and there's been some, complaints about that have been filed with various organizations. Even a workshop is a public meeting, it needs to follow this role. Absolutely, yeah, completely fair criticism too.
That explanation has to require training that they have, I think, starting this month, that everybody's supposed to.
Yeah, I, I got an email today saying that they've finished their classes. Yeah, I, I got an email today saying that they've finished their classes. And so. Yeah, we're gonna, well, it still might be convenient, because then when we know people. Who have won the election, we can invite them to that issue too. Yeah.
Yeah. So, just so I'm clear, when we have changes to the agenda, it is for the council to remove items that they. Don't want to take up. Correct? Or are you guys just gonna be okay with whatever's on here?
Well, like, like Alan was saying, is we pretty much have to be okay. What I did was kind of totally changed the agenda around, which is. Alan Gray nicely put it, I agree, probably more than it should have been done. But. You know.
On our agendas before, we never had the changes to the agenda or the approved agenda. We just rolled whatever was on there.
Right, so Robert's rule says that the council has the right to take up the business, if it is just my business and the mayor's business. I just wanna make sure that we are having.
No, that does, that does remain that as part of the process. But it shouldn't happen.
Robert's rules are a suggestion.
Right.
And we can follow by the language, but right, we do it up to follow.
Right.
So we'll take changes to the agenda off.
No, that's part of Robert's rules.
I would like you to review that and show me where it's missing. That you have to have an item on there that lets you change the agenda.
I get what you're saying, so you're saying it shouldn't be an agenda item at all, you shouldn't get the option, but in rare cases, people can ask for it.
Should. I believe the way that this commission raises it now is a one shoot emergency item should be added to the agenda.
Okay, so, remove it.
Yeah.
I, I trust your knowledge, Alan.
I've been doing minutes for various meetings and following that.
Good deal, and you won't do that.
Thank you.
Great. We are now. Where are we at? We're update council rules, and these topics were what topics would the council like to work on? They weren't actually, at least that's how I read it. They weren't actually things that, they were just suggestions, so.
And you were saying you wanted to wait, those were my suggestions based on of. What I was seeing and conversations that were happening is that if we're talking about what goes on the agenda, that's in your council rules, if we're setting work sessions. You, your work sessions are set for a half an hour prior to a meeting rather than regularly intervalled work sessions. And. If we wanna wait until January to start having those conversations, that's fine, but it still needs to be updated, especially in light of. The public meetings law, so. You don't have anything that says that you use Robert's rules and we use it liberally, and that's confusing when we're. Trying to keep things very clear, so.
So, you're saying we have to update council rules. For removing the changes to the agenda?
There's, there's a lot of things in the council rules that are stated.
Yeah, there's several items in there that are. Either not matching with open meeting laws. Or LOC has a different take on it. Or like this whole thing about only thirty minutes before a meeting where essentially almost every other city does it, we can advance as far as. Workshops go, and it's actually even confusing. In the council rules as far as workshops, because it says workshop, this is a meeting. So, you have a meeting before a meeting, that kind of.
I don't remember, I've got it right here, Mark, it says about workshop. Study sessions, it just says a workshop.
Right.
And or study session may be held with appropriate notice. The workshop study session is normally scheduled to discuss major policy or issues. Changes in policy, council goal setting, and for educational purposes. The public input is permitted during a workshop study session unless specifically allowed by the council. Public input period will be allowed when subject becomes a people or the council. Or action at a regular meeting.
So, where was the thirty minute thing?
Maybe that was the old version I was afforded.
Well, that's one less we have to worry about.
That's what I read, I think that's still published on the website.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's why I thought it was true. Well, I think we're set on that one, so we're good there, but there are other things.
It's personally under, on, on the agenda here, is actually a model LOC. I know it's very interesting to read today. That's like all of us, if we have opportunity to read that, might be a really good report.
Before we start. One of my fears is, is that people who won't be here. Will be voting on it, if it's done before the end of the year.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe you can make them the actual changes until the new council sees, but we can start discussing it.
So put it as a topic to keep on.
I mean, yeah. Continue discussions and workshops or the regular.
I think workshop is the best environment. Including.
Exactly, I mean, there's a lot of discussion. Okay. I guess we're down to contracting procedures. Anybody wanna talk about that? One of the things that I would mention about contract procedures. It's very hard to judge which contract is the best contract. When I see two different contracts being approached in two different ways. So I think it's very important that we have a. A set. Procedures for a contract. And set procedures, because the last time this issue came up, I saw an open ending contract. That's all, this is the amount contract. And you can't compare those two. So I just, you know, don't wanna get into that area. But I, I did actually go through and read. The model rules on that, and they seem. Of course, the amounts on them are way different from where in charge the town is. But we can always change that, and it's quite detailed as far as. Things that we're probably gonna wrap in this city, but. Something to think about.
Well, what I like about it is that there's a lot of variety, that you can look at different situations, so that we know that we're providing best practices. Whether it's your informal written solicitation, there's guidance there. Retroactive approval and things like that, so it would, it would help us if we had.
Something, because we typically won't cover a lot of those issues till when we do. Or prepare.
Correct.
Our current contracting procedures are, the, it was over a certain. Amount, I think, what is it, five thousand dollars, that we are required, RFP. For.
Is it five thousand? Yeah.
I think it's five thousand, yeah.
That's in the charter, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we've run into that situation recently, where we didn't get or didn't have three digits. And it's kind of like you mentioned, or. Presented in a way that makes it sometimes difficult.
I've got a. Big requirements in the city charter right here. I'll read it, it says, before any public improvement or the purchase of any personal property. The estimated total cost of which is twenty five thousand dollars or more. The city council shall call for bids and shall follow the procedures as set forth in laws. Of the state or organ pertaining to public purchasing for public improvements. Of such value or cost. As require bidding procedures. In the event no such laws exist, the council shall provide further method.
Where, where have I read that five thousand?
I think the five thousand is basically what the city manager can. If I read that right, what she can spend without. Approval of the council.
So, Alan, you're coming, is that the charter or the?
With Lakeside Charter. Lakeside Charter.
Charter, yeah.
Those are just great.
Yeah, I, I thought I saw on the website where it's. I thought, I. I think we have a couple charters out there now.
It's out there somewhere, because I, we read that where.
Well.
The city manager.
I just read the twenty five right there, oh, not five thousand.
Five thousand. It's out there somewhere, because our red deck says. In fact, we discussed it. With the former city manager, about he could spend before he had to go to the council. And I believe he was the one that said something about five thousand.
I remember that. Well, we can't have two charters, I'll tell you that much.
Well, we need to see, like Alan's saying, that potentially we have a. No conflict or, that's what I'm saying. But, unless, you know, they're out.
I haven't seen it actually in, in Britain, I've just worked.
I think I've seen it, right, yeah. I can't remember. There's a. So, so. Right, we're just. So, we'll leave that to you to found out, Krista, if you could figure out. While I, yeah, probably.
The, the one that I have, and I don't know if it's the one that you have, and again, my stuff was. Outdated, so it says. That the city shall have the power to acquire, purchase, devise, condemnation property, so this is public improvements. And then assets and. Bid requirements is twenty five thousand, so it is the same that, that you have. But in the published code, it says five thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So, so. And then, as I was bringing up to you earlier, we also have conflict with like. The code enforcement in our published code says to bring those things to council, so there. There's conflicts with what we're publishing now and not keeping an update of either what's being reviewed.
That was. Rebuilding my place, so. So we need to look into this some more. Michael, I can't think of other comments, but if you can provide us the information that you know about that. And, you know, well, it's going in the right direction.
And help to think what's published and available, is what we're obligated to, if there's some thing that's not published.
There's some people who've been around here for a long time. They. Know a lot of things now, so that will save us from running down a few rabbit holes. Okay, so. I guess we're at the end of the list.
So we keep contracting on here as an ongoing discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then I just have one more question, if we're gonna have regularly scheduled meetings. If everybody likes the workshop, we're gonna keep doing this, could we have it? Two weeks apart, because this puts a lot of meetings together for us, and it would kind of break up.
I like that idea.
I'm, I'm definitely fine with that.
Me too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Every two weeks.
Sorry, go ahead.
Every two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will provide you more time to get stuff together, and then, of course. If we come up with questions about, but then you'll have to know, you'll have, have to have a pretty good idea of what the agenda's gonna be for the next. Council meeting too, at that meeting.
Well, if we're.
Is that what we're gonna discuss to put on the agenda during the workshop, correct?
Yeah, but she. Krista will always have a list of items based upon what happens during the month. That she'll, we'll need that addressed right away, so she'll have stuff that she'll. That definitely need to go on the agenda. And hopefully she'll, like, for example, if it's contract or something like that, we'll wanna see it ahead of time. So she'll have to, you know, be able to. Try to bring it to the workshop, so we can at least look at it beforehand. Of course, you know, things happen and it might not happen, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that. We have some items, and I think we should have a permanent thing on any workshop. That we discuss the upcoming council agenda, would you guys agree with that? Yeah. Which is why. I don't really wanna overstep my bounds on that. Okay, good, so we're agreed on that, we're agreed on the, I'm sorry.
Is it every, is it like a regular meeting, two weeks workshop, regular meeting, two weeks workshop?
Yeah, so if we did, what do we got, the second week, so what, the fourth week? Would.
Yeah.
It may, could do it, does it have to be on Thursday? Could we maybe break it up? Because my packets are also due for other meetings on Thursday.
What is, what is your Tuesdays good for you? Okay, because we're adding additional meeting. What we're gonna do, so you gotta work.
Something like a Tuesday would be good for me too, yeah.
Tuesdays good? So I take it people.
For the workshop, correct?
Yeah, for workshop, yeah, so thank you to everybody who likes having workshops.
And six P M would be time, so, I was, I was reviewing the charter today and said that typically it says in the charter.
Yeah.
So I just, you know, we need to agree that six P M is.
I agree six P M. It's worth my money to seven, eight, nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that.
All right, well, good. I guess that covers it for tonight. Anybody else? No? I adjourned the meeting at. Quarter, well, it's just a seven fifty. Thank you all, I appreciate everybody coming up to the workshop.